San Bernardino. Welcome to the agenda review for tonight. We've got some stuff to go over, so. It's going to be a. A bit, but I think there's some really good topics that we need to talk about. You guys have been reaching out and. You know. Hitting this one item and I don't want to overshadow the other stuff, but yeah, we will go. Into a good discussion about it. I'm trying not to be so. Steadfast in my own opinion as to how I think this should play out, but I definitely will make sure that I. Go over every topic equal consideration. So let me just make sure that we are up. And running. On the live. So hang on one sec. And if you have questions, comments, whatever, please don't hesitate to jump in. We've already got people. Hi Scott, hi Paula. Okay. So let's go ahead. And see what we got going on. Our gender review. Okay, so this is the agenda for Wednesday, May third. Close session, open session. Close begins at five thirty P M. And open session begins at seven. So at five thirty. They are going to be talking about existing litigation with Diana Herrera. And then again, they're going to be discussing the recruitment for the city manager position. So what's interesting to me is. There seemed to be like this big deal that we were getting some. New firm that was going to have a broader range of candidates, but. It's really just Coffin Associates again for the city manager recruitment and we've already paid them. So. I'm not, I'm not sure really. What we're gonna get this time. They were like, it's a Santa Barbara based firm. So that, that's, that's it. If you have anything you want to say about this particular. Item or the one with Diana Herrera, you're more than welcome to make a public comment. At seven P M. They'll start, they will do the invocation, they will do the pledge of allegiance, the closed session report, if there's anything to. Talk about, then they'll get into public comments. The city manager will give an update. Mayor and council updates, reports, presentations. They are going to do a proclamation for Asian American Pacific Islander Month in the city of San Bernardino. And then a proclamation for the fifty-fourth annual professional municipal clerks week for the city. And then a proclamation recognizing water safety month, so. Three photo ops and recognitions. In the middle, so be prepared for that. Then they are going to make appointments. Councilwoman Calvin is gonna appoint someone to the charter review committee. The Public Safety and Human Relations Committee. Sandra Barr is putting someone on the downtown advisory. We'll go through, see, I guess we can see who they are. A general plan advisory councilwoman of our planning commission, she's busy, the mayor is. Going to reappoint the mayor's previous pick. Of. Angela Halfman. And then is also going to put appoint Jason Capo more. To the animal control commission. So for those that have been asking, this is why the mayor has so many picks. Interestingly enough. And I don't know if this is written in the charter, I haven't seen it and correct me if I'm wrong. The mayor gets two appointments to every commission. And the council members only get one. In my opinion, for those who have asked. I would absolutely either cut the mayor down to one appointment per commission. And make it eight, or I would not allow the mayor any. Commissioners based on the fact that the mayor doesn't vote. So I don't know why they would need a voting commissioner to make or sway any decisions. That's just me. So I absolutely believe it could be revisited. I'm a firm supporter in putting criteria in place to put people on commissions. We were talking about that three, four years ago. In the last two meetings, the council has talked about this, so. We'll see where that goes. On the consent calendar. They are talking about. Adoption of an ordinance, so. It's recommended the mayor and city council San Bernardino adopt an ordinance and levying special taxes to be collected during the fiscal year. To pay the annual cost of maintenance. And servicing of landscaping, lighting, water quality improvements, graffiti, streets, street sweeping parks, trail maintenance and reserve funds. And administrative expenses with respect to San Bernardino Community Facilities District. So. Interestingly enough, let's look at this and Josh, I see your comment, we'll get to it real quick. So. This is. Another facilities district where they would collect taxes on it. I saw an email today where people are challenging. Not that we shouldn't be getting. Money, but how this is all going about. These are additional taxes on properties. And people are purchasing homes with this new tax, you know, attached to it rather than I guess the developer used to pay these things. So. I think it's if we talk about growth and we talk about wanting people to move here. These assessment districts, I think, may or may not be as great as. Previously discussed, so something just to to look at, you know, it always important. They're going to approve of amendment three to the interim golf course management agreement. For the operations and maintenance of the Shannon Hill Golf Course, remember that is a city. Golf course, so hey, I'm here for that. I, I, I think golf courses are important. Especially for draw. I mean, what, what other reasons are you going to come? And where else could you go really with golf courses? So Josh said, I read in the sun San Bernardino could end the pact with Carousel Mall redevelopment to fix state violations. We're gonna talk about this because yeah, that is something that is going to be discussed. And so thank you for bringing that up. We're coming for it. Okay, look, I got live chat. Let's see, we've got authorization to proceed with a right away vacation of a portion along Ninth Street and Tippecanoe. So if you live over there, you're looking for a right away. That's Public Works Authorization to Proceed with the street vacation or portion of Broadway Avenue and Word One. So. If that's in your area, go ahead and. You can always make a public comment on this. Then twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four E S G emergency solutions grant and community development block grant agreement. Let's. Talk about this because here's the thing, right? So we just had a special meeting on Monday. This is kind of what bugs me. So it's recommended that the mayor and city council San Bernardino approve an emergency solutions grant. A sub recipient agreement with the Salvation Army Lutheran Services of Southern California and the Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino County. And approve. The community development block grants. And sub recipient agreement with the inland fair housing and mediation board. So let's look at this. This is page two, two, two. Because remember, we're talking about. How important homelessness is, how important creating shelters and homes, affordable housing, all of these things. And. What I have a hard time with, and it could just be me. Is this stuff just being consent? What is it that you're consenting to? What is it that we need to be addressing and discussing publicly as far as our solutions? Remember, we declared a state of emergency on homelessness. Okay, well, that's to deal with homelessness, but what about housing, lack of housing? So let's, let me read a little bit. The city of San Bernardino is entitled, is an entitled city that has been awarded E S G. Grants pursuant to subtitle B of Title Four of the McKinley Vento Homeless Assistance Act. As amended by Division B of the Homeless Emergency Assistance and Rapid Transition to Housing Act of two thousand nine. For the rehabilitation or conversion of buildings for use as emergency shelter for the homeless. For the payment of certain expenses related to operating emergency shelters. So. Let's, let's talk about this because this, what this is saying is that San Bernardino, the city of San Bernardino is entitled to. Transition old buildings into homeless emergency shelters. For the payment of certain expenses related to operating emergency shelters for essential services related to emergency shelters and street outreach for homeless and homelessness. Prevention and rapid rehousing assistance. A key element of the C D B G and E S G program. Is the required sub recipient agreement for measuring the sub recipients' performance and regulatory compliance. Now. One of the largest concerns. Is that. We have zero oversight, like we give money, not saying that to these specifics, but that we've given money. And we can't qualify or justify. Where this money went. But here we are. Having, you know, whole conversations about giving funds just consent wise, just. And so I, I just. Agree, right? We need these shelters. We need to do something far more than just sheltering. I mean, we have to put a real plan together, which the city doesn't have. This is, this to me is Band-Aids on bullet holes. I'm gonna be honest with you, Band-Aids on bullet holes. Because the entire discussion of housing people isn't here. It really isn't. And, and if we're gonna solve homelessness, if we're, which. We, we won't solve. The hole, but being able to really. Put a dent into what's happening here is greater than this, so much greater than this. So. Look, here I am, right? Babbling for a couple of minutes on this. I think it's worthy of a discussion. I don't think this is a consent. Item, I think it, it really needs to feed into the larger scope of what is the plan? What is the plan for homelessness? But not hot, you know, oh, this is an opportunity, that's an opportunity, what is the plan? So. There is my two cents on that. Agree or disagree, that's fine. And I'm trying to catch your comments, so you know, please feel free to jump in anytime. Okay, where we're. We go back. Page eight. Nine. Hang on, guys. Okay. All right. We are back on item number. Fifteen sixteen approval of the payroll, we're good there. Investment portfolio, always if you are a real numbers person, great place to look where we're putting our money. Second Amendment to the Concentria Medical Center Professional Services Agreement for Pre-Employment. Authorized the Second Amendment with the Occupational Health Center of California doing business. And pre-employment and screening services. Okay, so I'm pretty sure that's just a contract with the city. Resolution accepting the Federal Railroad Administration Railroad Trespassing Enforcement Grant. So the city. Is receiving a grant for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay. I think not that this should be super discussed, but maybe we should, you know, have a moment where we. Talk about what this hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is meant to do and. You know, give more of an explanation. Money's great, but why and for what? Receive annual military equipment report and approve future purchases. So. Let's look at that. Receive and file the department's annual military equipment use report. Okay, page seven. Forty-three. I, I honestly, I don't know that, so. Okay. Background. A B four eighty-one. Was enacted in January of twenty twenty-two, so about a year ago, over a year ago, to increase transparency, accountability and oversight. Well, those are none of the words associated with our city, but let's keep going. Surrounding the use and acquisition of military equipment by state and local law enforcement. It requires law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from the legislative bodies that oversee them. Before purchasing, raising funds for or acquiring military equipment by any means. Law enforcement agencies are required to obtain approval by their legislative bodies, which for us would be the city council. Before collaborating with another law enforcement agency in the development or use of military equipment within the law enforcement agency's jurisdiction. Or before using any newer existing military equipment not previously approved. Okay, so hey, cool, checks and balances. This is an approval, but here's the thing, again. Kind of seems like a big deal to me, not that I don't support it, we'll look at what we're going to support, but. I'm pretty sure the council isn't looking. So we've got three unmanned aerial vehicles. We got drones, drones are cool, but there's a lot of. Discussion around drones and privacy in the First Amendment. And all that good stuff. And then unmanned ground vehicles, robotics, hey, okay, so I don't know if these are detonators, I don't know. What, you know, they're doing, let's see. So we've got drones have had a major impact on traffic collision reconstruction, reconnaissance. Before tactical deployments hostage and barricade situations, forensic investigations, patrol deployed operation. Tethered operations and traffic pattern evaluations, to name a few. That's pretty cool. Look, I, I get it, I understand all that good stuff. And if this is what. They're able to do, I think, you know, it's worth the support and discussion. Then we also have. Robotics, robotics offers several key benefits to law enforcement agencies. One of the primary advantages of using robotics is an increased safety they provide. Robots can be deployed to perform tasks that are too dangerous or life threatening for officers such as cleaning. I'm sorry, clearing the room or location where a potentially armed individual is located. Entering a building that may be rigged with explosives. Or in locations where toxic chemicals are suspected. So look here. These I think are great to explain it to, you know, a worthy extent. I hope that in, in this moment, the council has read this. That's all I'm hoping is that they see like, they understand, right? If I say, why did you approve military equipment? They're gonna be like, oh, well, that's for drones and robots. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Okay. Next. We have. Approving amendment number one to cooperative agreement with the San Bernardino County Transit Authority. For phase two of the San Bernardino MetroLink Accessibility Improvement Project. So as you guys know, this is big. Again, I'm just, I wouldn't need to go through it because it's consent, but I don't think this is consent. I think we, one of the first things. Is to make sure that. We are. We are doing everything explanatory. One of the reasons we disagree with government so much is because a lot of times we don't know what they're doing. And that's not our fault. It's a lack of transparency. And so I think as, as we move forward with all of these plans, it would be great if the city was really. It reminding us, like telling us, hey. This is where we are with this accessibility improvement project. Give us an update. That's, that's where I am on that. Okay, we're gonna talk about this one. Task order issued to Wilden Engineering for augmented engineering services. Pursuant to professional service agreement for on-call engineering services and approval to professional services agreement. Here we go. Approve a task order Wilden Engineering to Wilden Engineering to. Approve a task order Wilden Engineering. To Wilden Engineering to provide augmented land development and national pollutant discharge elimination. N P D S programmatic services. Pursuant to the approval professional service agreement. So here's the deal, this is an issue. We talked about this, let's call it out right now. Number one, number two, authorize the agency director, Daniel Hernandez. No, I'm sorry, Agency Director of Administrative Services Barbara Whitehorn to issue a purchase order in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And approving the amendment to professional service agreement for on-call engineering services. We have an N P D S manager. Why in the world would we go and pay? Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for N P D S programmatic services? We have that, and this has been brought before. Remember that meeting where we called it out? And the union showed up and was like, hey, by the way, you have not met and conferred with us on this. Here we go again. Daniel Hernandez trying to outsource a city funded position. I got, I'm gonna write an email. I'm just gonna let you know, guys, no, I'm gonna write an email, so. Okay, that, that's nonsense. We, this is us paying double unreal. Why would we pay double? Why would we do that? So be aware, be very aware. Okay. Now this is for Josh and everybody else that's been watching. Number twenty-three discussion item. Authorize the interim city manager to terminate the exclusive negotiating agreement, the E N A. With the San Bernardino Development Company, S B D C, which was R D I Co. And pay liquidated damages associated with said termination. Okay, we are going to look at this in depth. We are. Page one thousand. Two hundred and eighty-one. Here we go. It is recommended that the mayor and city council authorize the interim city manager to terminate the exclusive negotiating agreement. With the San Bernardino Development Company. S B Z C for the Carousel Mall redevelopment project and authorized payment of liquidated damages. To S B D C in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars associated with said termination. On March sixteenth, the city received a notice of violation of surplus land regard, surplus land. Regarding the city of San Bernardino surplus land disposition for the property at. Two ninety-five Carousel. From the State Housing and Community Development Division, H C D. The notice of violation alleges San Bernardino violated several provisions of the Surplus Land Act relative to the former Carousel Mall property. The alleged violations to the S L A and the city's response are as follows. Failing to provide ninety days of good faith negotiations to entitle entities who submitted notice of interest, the response from the city, the city disagreed with that. Negotiating and selecting a developer prior to issuing a notice of availability. As discussed with H C D prior to the issuance of the notice. Of a notice violation, the city issued an R F Q in May of two thousand nineteen. This was before A B fourteen eighty-six became law. In January of twenty twenty, the city issued the following, a follow-up R F P in February of two thousand twenty-three. However, the amended S L A did not apply to the property at the time. Okay. Failing to give priority to affordable housing, the city disagrees with H C D's position that the city violated the S L A by failing to give priority. To affordable housing developers. Number four, failing to provide a complete description of negotiations. In response. In the city's previous disposition documentation to H C D, past staff did not include any description of negotiation discussions. With Boulevard Companies and Alliance Strategic Development and indicated that no qualified entities responded to the notice of availability. At the time the information was provided to H C D, the city had received. Two general inquiries from developers who inquired about acquisition of a small piece of the forty-three acres. No one had expressed an interest in the property that was declared surplus. And the two entities who had made general inquiries, inquiries had withdrawn from the process of their own accord. Consequently, at the end of the notes availability period, the city had no respondents. Okay. Here we go. On April fifth, twenty twenty-three and April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Staff received direction from mayor and city council to work towards curing the notice of violation. Staff from the city manager's office. Community Housing and Economic Development Department and the city attorney's office. Have had several conversations with H C D staff to discuss the city's available options for curing the notice of violation. The option that H C D provided illuminated need. For the city to terminate the existing E N A with San Bernardino. Development Company and to pursue the S L A process again at a future date in collaboration with H C D. Section three of the original E N A provides that if a notice of violation is received by the city. The term of the E N A is told, that means suspended. Until the alleged violation is resolved. To cure the violation, staff is recommending the termination of the E N A and the city restarting the S L A process at some point in the future. While the city does not believe the early termination of the E N A as a result of the N O V is a breach of the E N A. Section twelve of the original E N A provides that the city breaches the E N A, the damages owed to S B D, the developer is a hundred thousand dollars. Staff believes that terminating the E N A and resolving any potential dispute related to the existing E N A. By authorizing the payment of the liquidated damages is the best way to move this process forward. And is in the best interest of the community. Let's stop right there. We're going to stop right there. That's B S. That right there. Is a whole lie. A whole lie. Gaslighting at its finest. You are gonna tell me that the Department of Housing and Community Development told our city. That we had to terminate our contract, our exclusivity, exclusive negotiating agreement with our downtown developer that. We, the community, supported. So that they could help us along and collaborate. That, they illuminated the need. They told the city, they illuminated the city. This from Nathan Freeman, who is the same guy who went out into our community. Months before we ever received the, the violation notice. And just blatantly was like, oh, we don't have the developer, doesn't even have the money. We're not, I'm talking to other developers. Who was trying to sabotage this project, who withheld information from the developer for eighteen, for twelve months from the city council's. Subcommittee on the downtown, that guy is the one making our decisions and Charles McNally, who's been here a whole three months. Has determined that the best thing for our community is to go against our wishes. And they really believe a hundred thousand dollars is gonna solve them when they have been violating this the whole time. When Theodore Sanchez already went live, was talking about subdividing the downtown into twenty-eight separate parcels. Look. Let me continue, I'm sorry. Section three of the original E N A provides that if the notice of violation is received by the city, the term of the E N A is told. Until the alleged violation is resolved. So here, section three says, if for any reason the city gets a violation notice, you are to suspend the agreement. While you fix this. If what the city is saying is true, which. Is that nobody that wanted an affordable housing project ever wanted the whole parcel that. That we can put it right out for bid, let someone come through. If someone wants, if someone can actually fund an entire forty-three acres of affordable housing. Then that shifts. If not, we are back on track. We are completely back on track. With R D I Co, S B D C, whatever their names are now. And there is no loss to us. We don't have to start the process over. We don't have to get rid. There is nothing in that letter from H D C that ever said. Please terminate your agreement effective immediately with your developer for the downtown. I want to know who documented this phone call? Who was on these, these so-called discussions with H C D? Who was that? Staff from the city manager's office and the community and housing and economic development department. And the city attorney, so the, the city attorney that sits. On. The ad hoc committee is Elizabeth Hurl, Nathan Freeman is economic development, who was on the city managers? I'm just, I don't trust him. I don't trust him. I'm just gonna say that right away. Uh, section twelve of the E N A. Again. A hundred thousand dollars, yeah, right in your dreams. You're gonna just pay a hundred thousand dollars, people are gonna walk away. Providing adequate. And suitable housing is a critical responsibility for all cities in California, including the city of San Bernardino. The city is conscious of the need for all types of housing, especially, especially affordable housing. For residents throughout the community, though previous staff attempted to adhere to the new laws of the surplus land act, the city acknowledges that the state must enforce policies. Yeah, we get that. Termination of the E N A with San Bernardino downtown. With the city intending to work closely with H C D on future S L A process, the notice of violation will be resolved. It will not. Terminating the E N A with R D I Co does not cure or correct. What the city did. In fact, it violates the E N A agreement. And this city went above and beyond and has gone above and beyond. The call of duty to negotiate in bad faith. Since they voted six to one, you guys, six to one, this downtown redevelopment was approved. Six to one and Mr. Teddy Sanchez, I knew I was breaking the law the whole time, voted for it. And never publicly ever has H C D ever said. In their letter. This is the way to do it, guys, terminate. In fact. We'll, we'll see what other information comes out. Real quick, real quick. Real quick. Real quick. Uh, as an example, the city of San Diego received a notice of violation on development of a project using city on property. San Diego chose to terminate their discussions with their selected developer in pursuant, in, uh, to pursue the S L A process. With H C D, when the city of San Bernardino is ready to pursue the S L A process, it will be done with A C D's guidance. First of all, we are not the city of San Diego. We are not under their circumstances. And you all have been out here trying to sabotage an entire project. And they think it'll impact us by a hundred thousand dollars. I promise you, it will be hu- a hundred million dollars. At the very least. If this is allowed to happen, I'm just gonna give you my own opinion, because I try not to do that, but this is so upsetting to me. And I think to the community, uh. This city has done everything, these people in the city have done everything not to allow this to come forward. Remember, we would have the Chinese corporation that John and Juan Figueroa were out being flown to China, funded downtown dinners in L A. Had we not found it, called that out. Since then, Nathan Freeman was brought here by Rob Field out of Riverside to help destroy. Remember. Lincoln Group came to this city for forty-five days and pulled out. Because of what a disaster, a lie, and fraudulent agreements in the background that they found out that we were trying to pull. Let's not be naive that anybody thinks that a developer is gonna walk away for a hundred thousand dollars. In fact, if we remember, Montecito Equities up at the north end of our city sued for twenty-four million. That will bankrupt us, you guys, we have roughly. We'll just say forty, forty-five million dollars of expendable. Funds in our budget. A hundred million dollars, two hundred million dollars, if I remember correctly. The, just the tax revenue alone projected for a year, given us that we would get the property tax, is gonna be three hundred and forty-five million dollars. To, to the city of San Bernardino in the course of this development. We are costing this developer money. And we think a hundred thousand dollars, you can make more money getting in a car accident. Get out of here. Anybody that votes for this, and I'm gonna say this, any council person that votes for this. And supports this, knowing it's a lie, knowing that the depart, the, the Department of Housing and Community Development does not make recommendations. And I called him, you guys, I'm just gonna let you know, I called, I called, because this, it was nonsense to me. They're trying to make it seem like. The housing and community development is the one who told them to do this. So if, if the council wants to believe that nonsense. That's on them. If they vote for this, they're voting for one of the largest. Lawsuits, we will see. Um, uh, Tran has not said anything about this. I have not heard the council speak at all. So. It is. The lack, uh, I, I don't, I don't want to like pre-impose my idea on the council of what they will do. But anybody that supports this, get rid of them. Remember, we called in, we supported, we asked for this. R D I Co, S B D C, whoever they are now, they have never. Fallen short in their agreement with the city, regardless of Nathan and Teddy. Put it in his pocket Sanchez, running around telling everybody, trying to be John Valdivia, pay-to-play. With every developer that he can get in touch with, me taking the city attorney and Fred Scherrad out for drinks, trying to meet with developers. Remember, they didn't argue that fact. So that they think that they can make more money and killing the first ever community benefits agreement that's ever been offered to the city. So all these unions, S B for S B, S B for whatever. If you don't come out and speak up, you, who do you think's gonna give you a community benefits agreement? Because it was, nobody else offered it to us, and our council is not in support. Of having a community benefits agreement anywhere in this city, a uniform zoning code that requires everybody be paid the same and treated the same and. Get out of here. Get out of here. Okay, that's it. That's all I have on that one. Any questions, please post in, sorry, guys, um. Okay, does it cost a lot to recall? It, a recall is costly. For the fact that you have to really know what you're doing, but here's what I'm gonna tell you. If the people of this city really wanna recall, I would look at the city of Ucaipa and what they're doing, they're gonna recall three people. What I would refuse to allow is rich people to dictate what you can and cannot do based on their own opinions. Of how much they're willing to put out. Signatures are free, walking is free, the processes is free, but you, you gotta, you gotta have people behind you. That's what I will tell you about a recall. If it's a community support. Um, then go for it, so. But it does take a lot of work and a lot of coordination, and you gotta find somebody, so it's not enough. Just to recall Ted Theodore Sanchez, which I fully support. Who are you gonna replace him with? That's the question. Who, who would you put in his state? Who would you put in, in with, uh, instead of Fred Scherrad? Who would you, you know what I mean? Like, the, that's the, and as we saw in the last run. We really have qualified candidates, so there's a whole mechanism and a process behind that, but we can talk about it. Maybe I'll do a special video on. On the recall process. So there's public hearings, uh, an appeal of a conditional use permit for convenience or necessary, uh, of necessity. So it's recommended that the city council of San Bernardino denying an appeal thereby upholding the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit. And public convenience of necessity letter, not allowing development established in operation of a market with a new alcohol beverage control type. License with an ex- existing building containing twenty, uh, two thousand square feet. Mikey's Market on a pos, on a parcel containing forty-five acres. On Fifth Street, so if you have anything to say about that, you can. An appeal for conditional use permit and minor exception. This is, uh, denying an appeal thereby upholding the planning commission's denial of. A C U P in minor to allow the development establish an operation of a self-storage. Facility comprised of two multi-story buildings containing. Oh, interesting. Containing a total of approximately a hundred and nine thousand square feet and ten percent increase in the building height. Interesting, this is the one that Councilwoman Calvin. And, and her, the sixth word came and said, we do not support this project, and they are still appealing it. And this is what gets me, they still wanted to sub, to, to combine the parcels of this property. Because they were going to fight this. Wow. Wow. Okay, interesting. We'll see where that goes. Uh, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four annual action plan for community development, block grant, home investment partnership and E S G's. This is a open discussion, so if you guys have any type of input, we can look at it real quick. Let me go to. One four and four seven, that's, that's very, oh, and we'll talk about Vertamont Ranch, by the way, so. Make sure I'm checking your comments. Okay. So. Conduct a public hearing to obtain citizen comments. So if you wanna look, and you can, I would go to page one thousand four hundred and forty-eight. To receive federal funding from HUD, the city must submit an A A P that identifies the proposed activities. That would be used to address the priority needs or specific goals. So the city anticipates in receiving two point nine million in C D B G funds and one point four in home funds. And two hundred and seventy-three thousand in emergency solution grant funds. Subject to limitations imposed by federal reg- regulations, home, E S G and C D B G funds. May be used for homeowner assistance, emergency shelter, homelessness prevention, housing. Per preservation, economic development, capital improvements, public services. Housing development, fair housing and program management. So there's a lot. There are a lot of things that we can do with these funds. And what I would suggest is. Like, looking through this. I mean, we talk about street paving, we talk about a lot of different, uh. A lot of different things, so go through, you got Fair Housing Mediation Board, you have, uh. All kinds of different stuff, so I think this is kinda cool, and. I would go for it. Look, they've got inland fa- fair housing, they have. City Tenant Protection Pilot Program for two hundred thousand, micro enterprise. Casa Ramona, okay, let's, uh, they wanna put a fence up, Casa Ramona's gonna get a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Lutheran Services twenty-five thousand. I don't know, Lutheran Services is gonna be applying for five million, why would we give them twenty-five thousand? If Casa Ramona is on there. Where is Home and Neighborhood Services? So this is the kind of stuff I would, you can come in and make recommendations, you can come in and talk about, um, all these types of things, so. Yeah, a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a fence, like. I, I'm a little shocked by that. That's, that's a bit much. I, I think we need to really talk. Uh, that's, of course, a Theodore Sanchez thing, so. Uh, it, you know, something, I would go through it, go through it, go through it, go through it, for whatever you would. Support or not support. Next, we have, uh, community facilities district, so check this out. This, uh, the city wants to put a s- a special tax bond on properties. Authorizing issuance not to exceed three point five million aggregate principal account. Of community facility districts for Vertamont Ranch, approving a form of preliminary official statement. A form of fiscal agent agreement and a form of bond purchase. What my understanding is, is that we pay like three. For like ten years. Home, gonna, Vertamont Ranch developer, not gonna be responsible for any of the caretaking, it's gonna be an additional cost onto. The, the purchaser, so. I'm hope. Vertamont Ranch will, I don't, I'm not buying a home there, so I hope that thing that. Really gets discussed or is, you know, transparent to people. And when you buy your house, you think you're being assessed a special, a certain tax, I don't know, so. Interesting enough, I know that the, that have a big contention with the developer, so. That one, then, be considered for meetings. Okay, here we go, sorry, um, real quick, don't go anywhere. So last but not least. Um, they've got the OXPO cement pile and notification period for public hearings, so those are. The last two. Items to be considered, so. Interesting, interesting, interesting. Okay, let me. To where I was. Uh, but it's, it's, it, you know. There's stuff depending on live and what's going on that may or may not be worth it for you, so. Uh, yeah. My big items are definitely the Carousel Mall, I'm sorry, um. Yeah, the downtown redevelopment of the Carousel Mall, I have a big issue, uh, with. What they're trying to pull, the termination of the E N A, I, I think that's going to destroy the city. And I think there's going to be a big problem, so I'm not supporting that, I'm gonna call them out. Absolutely, I'm gonna call a council out. Because I don't wanna hear any excuse. We all read the same public letter. What private conversations are you having? And I hope the council asks that question. What private conversations y'all have? What'd you say? What'd you say? Cause I did a public records request, by the way, but it got back actually rather quickly, so. I'm, I'm a little impressed. Uh, let's see, Eloisa said, I saw last week that a homeless shelter will be located on G Street. It will be near an elementary school. Would that be a good idea to have that shelter near an elementary school? Um. I, I think it was already, uh, a Lutheran Services property. Here's the thing that I feel about homelessness and where we're putting people. The factors of why someone ho- is homeless is, is important to the discussion. And I think important to what you're saying, um, and, and asking the question. A lot of the issues that we're facing are mental illness. And addiction with the homeless. If. We are not providing support services for people who are mentally ill or addicted to things. Then that surrounding community is going to be negatively affe- affected by it. We know that, right? We see it right now. No treatment. Causes problems, so. With that, looking at the support services that they're providing, making sure that they are accountable for who they're bringing to that neighborhood, Eloisa is extremely important. So I can't give you a definitive yes or no, it could, what if it's veteran housing? If it's veteran housing, what's, there's no problem, if it's, if it's youth, uh, you know, transitional youth, so it really depends on the project and the timelines. And, and what we are going to be doing, because. Everybody wants the homeless moved and put somewhere. So we've got to determine where we're moving and putting them, so it's. We don't know yet. Could be a good idea, could not be a good idea. I'm hoping that the city will be fighting, uh, the, for the county to choose them as the partner for, um. Patton State Hospital, where we could pu- house then our mentally ill. And, and create a shelter situation for them in a more structured environment and be able to. Then house those who are just, who have lost their jobs or families or youth in, in a housing facility like that on G Street, so. Hope to God our council and mayor are having these conversations. I have not heard them, I don't know what they're thinking, this is why I would not, I prefer not seeing. Homelessness put on the consent calendar rather so that we can have the conversation as a whole. I hope that answered your question. Anybody else? Are we good? Okay. All right, with that, I am. Good for the evening. Um, so, thank you, guys, I hope you have a good night, watch the council meetings, come speak if you can. And if you have any questions, please don't. For, put it in the chat, I will be posting this to Instagram. Next door and YouTube so that you can review for the next couple of days, and any information I can find, I will definitely. Put out, but don't forget, more that we engage, the more educated we become. And more empowered we are to change our community in a positive, positive way. So thank you guys so much for your time, and I will. See you all soon. Stay safe, San Bernardino.